Turn that thing on, make sure you. Here, uh, we're on Facebook Live, uh, our first meeting of two thousand twenty-two, which is kind of hard to believe. I'll read the Freedom of Information Act, a statement in a court of South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, section thirty-four eighty-dash-E, South Conicode nineteen eighty-seven, amended all meetings, meeting area, but notified the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. This time we have our prayer. Mr. Go Man.
Let's bow heads. Father, here's again do we meet to try to do the will of you and to try to do what is pleasing in your sight as well as that of citizens of Darlington County. We thank you for all of this year. We ask God that you protect us as we deal with this virus situation, as we deal with the many issues that were facing us in education. We ask this in your name, we ask that you have us give us mercy, traveling mercy as we return back to our homes today.
Now we.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now ask for approval of the agenda.
This will approve.
Second.
Second, the discussion. I would favor the motion to approve the agenda.
Aye.
I oppose, I have it. Consent out of adult education admissions.
Chairman, I will accept the recommendation of administrator.
Second.
Second.
We take the minutes and thirty down. Kevin, go ahead and take the minutes, too.
Yeah, well, we're going to do that. We already got motion second on this side. I would favor the motion for adult education. I oppose, I have it. Minutes, December thirteenth two thousand twenty-one, regular meeting.
We will accept their minutes, oh please. December thirty, meeting.
Second.
Second.
Second. Discussion, I would favor the motion. I oppose, I have it. School Board Recognition Month.
I'll take that, yep.
Chairman Jeffords, members of the board, January is School Board Recognition Month to be able to tell all of our board members how much we appreciate what they do and certainly all the work that they've had to put in, starting this school year again and starting this, starting this calendar year again. But just a time to be able to say thank you. We have lots of different CERCs that some of our schools have provided, as well as our Darlington County Administrators Association have provided as well. Just a small token to say thank you for, for the work that you put in and that you continue to put in and again focusing on what's best for our students. So, thank you for that. We also have a poster that we typically sign with all of our board members and so we have six signatures. We've still got to get a couple of signatures to go before we snap that picture, Chris. So we'll make sure we get that complete and have that picture done at the work session that we have a little bit later on this month. But again, thank you, board members, for all of the work that you have put in and continue to put in for us.
Okay, moving on to two thousand twenty-two Service Awards.
I'll take that one, too.
So, the Darlington County School District and South Carolina School Boards Association would like to recognize the following board member for his years of service on the Board of Education. Mr. Warren Jeffords is getting his thirty-year pen. So, normally we stand up and we do this handshake and, you know, so.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. I'll give you a fist bump. Okay. And there's your certificate, too.
Congratulations.
Some of y'all work too far behind. Then we probably passed it. Thank you. Been a long thirty years.
Long, of course.
No, it's been a short thirty years, really. Okay, thank you, sir.
Appreciate all your service.
All right, moving on, next regular meeting. The next regular meeting of the Darlington County Board of Education is scheduled for February fourteenth two thousand twenty-two at six P M. in the board training room here at the administration office of Darlington. Okay, vote reports. Anything on that, Mr. Renee?
Yeah, they look pretty old.
Any questions, anyone? Vote. Wish we could pass the next one, but we can't. Covid update.
Yes, so Chairman Jeffords, members of our board, and our folks on Facebook and Live, including our employees, our parents, our stakeholders, this is the first chance that we've all had a chance to talk a little bit about how the return back to school after the Christmas break has gone. And so, first want to talk about numbers and what we've been looking at as far as over the past week, as far as quarantines and isolations. But I think I have to preface that conversation with, you know, clearly the numbers we're seeing right now aren't like anything we have seen in the past. The Omicron variant obviously is living up to its billing, is being very contagious. I don't think there's any sector, any business sector that's out there, whether it be healthcare or retail or the service industry, that is not being impacted significantly by Covid right now. And education's no different. K-12's no different. Darlington County is no different than that. And I think the, the biggest thing that we're all trying to do is work our way through this, to come out on the other side. We've done this before. We have navigated this before and been able to come out on the other side. And the goal is to continue to do that. So when I, when I talk about numbers, you know, I, I don't think it's, you, you can't really compare what's going on right now to any other time. It, it stands on its own. The state numbers, obviously, over the past weekend, we saw between thirteen to sixteen thousand cases in the state of South Carolina. Darlington County alone has been anywhere as between ninety up to three hundred cases that we've had over the past week on any given day. And so, you know, having those numbers in mind, kind of puts us where we are in the district as well. So, last week, and again, these numbers are coming from the reporting that folks do. So, so again, just to, just to clarify the numbers and what shows up on our portal that we have with the school district as well, that there is a reporting process. And so, for, for example, sometimes we find out that somebody is quarantined or isolation from DHEC and they directly contact the school. A lot of times we find out from our parents who contact the school or they contact the PCG. PCG is our contact tracing company. They have a one eight-hundred number now that, or a local number that is being utilized that parents are able to call and report their student, their, their children and any quarantine or isolation situation that they have. Another way that isolations and quarantines are reported are by the nurses in our schools. And so, they become aware where somebody may call them and then they submit the reports that, that tally up that particular day as well. So, you know, there, there, each day we are dealing with what has happened that particular day. And sometimes there may be a one-day lag if we're, if we're notified mid-afternoon to late afternoon about a positive case. We certainly know that that staff member or that student stays home. That's, that, you know, that's taken care of always. But as far as getting it reported on the portal that we have on the district site, that varies about, you know, one to two days as we move out through here. So just know that all of those ways are how we report numbers and how they are, how they show up on the portal. Each day I, I get a report of that particular day's numbers that have been turned in by all of our schools. And so, each school reports at the end of the day, throughout the day, actually. It is, it's not static, it's continuous. And then we get a report at the very end of the day of what's transpired in all of our schools across the district. So, that process has been in place, especially with our contact tracing folks that we're using since the beginning of this school year. And again, I'm glad they are in place because they conducted about eighteen hundred phone calls last week between quarantines and isolation. So, between, again, folks calling in or them calling folks, we had eighteen hundred phone calls that were conducted last week. So, for staff numbers, and these numbers are good is from, from last Monday through Friday. And when I say last Monday, we did not report over the Christmas break. So there were two weeks where we did not have numbers, we didn't report those. And so, we started on Monday the third, which was a professional development day for the school district. And these numbers run through Friday of last week. Obviously, we've had numbers over the weekend, we've had numbers today. Those are being updated as we speak. But for positive cases with employees, we had forty-nine that were reported last week and we had fifty quarantines. So again, forty-nine employees, fifty quarantines. And then as far as students, we had approximately a hundred and seventy-four positive cases and six hundred and twenty-eight quarantines. And, and so, you know, again, the, the amount of students that are out is, you know, is starting, is increasing. And it, it increased every day last week. Today, let me get my number for today, that we had at the end of this day. If you bear with me for a second. Yeah, so today, our numbers were, we had seven positive employees and nine quarantines and forty-four students and a hundred and forty-eight, you know, quarantines. So forty-four students were positive, a hundred and forty-eight were quarantined. And that's the pace that we're dealing with on a daily basis right now. So, you know, our, our attendance in schools right now, overall, you know, we're sitting at about fifteen percent absences for the district overall. But, but when you break it down in schools, for example, some of our larger schools, especially our high schools, it's between twenty-five to thirty percent absences that they have right now. Now, not all of that's Covid. And so, the reality is, is that we're, not only are we dealing with Covid, but we're dealing with flu, we're dealing with strep throat, we're dealing with stomach bugs, you know, and everything else that's out there. So, you know, clearly it's, it's a difficult time as far as, you know, having folks being in our buildings and our students being in our buildings. The, the, you know, again, a shout out to all of our schools, all of our teachers, all of our classified staff, teaching assistants, bus drivers, anybody that's in our buildings right now is, is chipping in to help out and cover classes. And so, thankfully, we've been able to cover classes. And so, thankfully, we've been able to cover classes. And so, yeah, we've, you know, we've got some high rates out there as far as people being out of buildings, but so far, thankfully, we've been able to cover it. And again, when I say "cover it," I don't mean that lightly. I understand how difficult that is for our teachers and our staff in the building to cover. That's not what they're wired to do and not what we asked them to do when we hired them. We asked them to teach their own classes and to cover their own students. And unfortunately, in these times, they're having to do a lot more than that. So, when I say "cover," I don't mean just to gloss over that. I realize the difficulty that this is on our people in our buildings right now. But it's in order to be able to have a place for our students to be. And I think that everybody understands now that the best place for our students is to be in our buildings. And we believe that's the safest place for our students to be, and that that's the place where they can be to learn the best as well. And so, you know, we are going to continue with the process of staying in school as long as we're able to stay in school with our supervision from our staff. And so, for example, we have had several classrooms that we've had to quarantine and they've had to go home. And, you know, it's no surprise that a lot of our self-contained special education classes, where our students are very close together and our adults have to be very close to those students, those were our first ones that wound up getting quarantined and being out of school. But we've also had some other random classes in various buildings where there's been positives and quarantines, and, you know, we've had to send those students home and send the staff home with them as well. So, you know, the focus that we are taking, and I've talked about this since the beginning of school this year, that we would stay in school as long as we had adequate supervision, we would start with the class base, and if we had to quarantine some classes, we would do that. If we have to quarantine a school because a significant amount of the adults are out of the building and not able to supervise adequately that school, then we will quarantine a school. And then, of course, as a district, we would only be out for virtual if the majority, a significant majority, of our buildings had to be closed down because of supervision. So, there's a lot of things that impact, too, that thought, that line of thinking about when we'll close. Buses and transportation, for example. We've got, you know, 60% to 70% of our students ride a bus to school. So, all of a sudden, if we didn't have bus drivers, then we would have some serious issues we'd have to work through on students not being able to get into schools. Cafeteria, food service workers, we've had several situations where, you know, a majority of those folks have been out. Thankfully, we've been able to cover and send other people from other buildings there. But clearly, if all of a sudden, district-wide, we lost the ability to serve food to students, that would seriously hamper our efforts right now. So, again, there's a lot of things that are at play here. I know it's difficult to have this kind of conversation, and then also know that we have basketball games going on right now, and we have after-school activities. And, you know, those folks are playing in facilities that have a lot of people in them. And so, it's, you know, we're kind of working through this the best way we can work through this. And there's no, there's no right answers, unfortunately, because, you know, we're not necessarily given the playbook of, well, here's what you do, and it's right. We're having to adapt with every scenario. And each day, I think many of us recall that it was week to week, and then it became day by day, and right now, it's hour by hour. If you follow along with the CDC guidelines and what's going on with DEHEC and CDC guidelines, they've changed by the hour. We had more changes today that dropped. We had changes over the weekend. We had changes last Thursday. Who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated, as far as what is vaccinated, who's fully vaccinated, who's maximally vaccinated? All of those things are not discussions we've had until the past two weeks. And the guidance continues to change on that. We understand how difficult that is for our parents, we understand how difficult it is for our employees, and just know that we're trying to do everything we can to keep us moving forward to work through this. So, again, you know, as far as our, you know, percentages out at schools, you know, we do have some of our schools that have had between 20% and 25% of their staff that have been out, teaching staff, but they've been able to cover because they've had teaching aides. A lot of our principals said that they've been very thankful for the part-time TAs that we have hired and the board allowed us to hire. They said those people have been invaluable, helping to do class coverage. Substitutes are almost nonexistent right now. I mean, I hate to say it, but, you know, substitutes are afraid to come into buildings right now, and that's just the facts. You know, they are not full-time employees, and they certainly have the option of not showing up in schools just because we need them to be there. And so, we're having a difficult time with substitutes at this point in time as well. So, but again, the point I want to make is that we are covering and that we are hanging in there. And, you know, I would just say, if we can just see a glimmer of hope of this coming to an end, I think all of us would be very relieved. It's a lot easier to work towards the end when you see it. Unfortunately, we're in the throes of it right now. So, again, that's the numbers that we're dealing with at this point in time. I wish I could tell you that those numbers aren't going to be higher over the next week or two, but unfortunately, we just don't know what we're dealing with right now. And we just have to take it day by day and work through it. So, again, you know, a lot of questions have come up when people become a close contact. You know, the first question is, have you been vaccinated right now? If you are an adult and you're what is called maximally vaccinated, and I'll defer to my DEHEC nurse here, too, to help me with this, but maximally vaccinated is you have had both doses of either the Moderna or Pfizer, and the Pfizer has been within five months, excuse me, within five months or longer than five months, and you've been boosted. Moderna is within six months, two doses, or two doses and a booster. And Johnson &amp; Johnson is the one dose within two months and then the booster. So, that is my understanding of maximally vaccinated, which would mean you would not have to quarantine for the five days that they've talked about. And again, you would have to wear a mask in the building because you are close contact, but you're not having to quarantine. And then, again, for our students and staff that aren't maximally vaccinated, but they are what's considered vaccinated or not vaccinated, they're pretty much under the same rules. And that is, you are out of the building for at least five days. You can take a PCR rapid or PCR lab test on, by day, no sooner than day four, and if you're negative, you can come back after day five. Again, you have to wear a mask for six to 10 days after that. And so, and again, if you're positive and you're isolation, what is that? You have to be out for at least five days. If you are not showing any symptoms after those five days and you don't have fever, then you're able to come back to school or work on that sixth day, again, wearing a mask through day 10 on that. So, that is the information that's out there. Household contacts, this is a difficult one for us and for our families because it's a double quarantine. There's just, you know, unfortunately, that is what we have. And so, if somebody tests positive in a household, and unless you can significantly, you know, short of being somewhere else other than in that home, you know, you're quarantined for the amount of time that person's isolated, and then you have another five days quarantined after that, and then you have to take a test after that to come back. So, I know it's a lot of information, and all I would just say is that you can, first of all, it's on our website, under our COVID-19 protocols, and so, there's a wealth of information there, but also, our schools can help explain, our PCG hotline can help explain. You know, we want to be able to help people work through this as much as possible. We did start our own PCR testing today in the Darlington County School District, again. And this PCR testing, lab testing, is available for our employees and for our students, all right, only. So, it's students or our employees are able to be tested through the Darlington County Testing Company that we are working with. We started today, I think it was 137? Yeah, 137 is how many we had tested today at this site. We hope to have another site as soon as possible set up in Hartsfield. We hope to have another site set up in Lamar. But, you know, these companies are just like everybody else, they're trying to find help right now. And so, it's taken a little bit of time to gear up. But at our site today, our first day, we had 137 tests that we gave. The good thing about the company that we are working, I know we've heard about some significant delays with other testing that's out there. You know, we're hearing stories of five to seven days for people to get back lab tests. Our vendor is telling us that they can get those, our tests back within 24 to 36 hours, that their lab, they own the lab, and their lab is in North Carolina, so there is not a far distance that these are being sent to, and that they are prioritizing K through 12 tests. So, we certainly hope that bears out because if we have a lot of folks coming and testing on that day four or five so they can come back, they should be able to get their results back so they can be back to school on day six. So, again, encouraged about being able to offer that for our folks in light of how difficult testing is to come by right now. There's lots of information about rapid test, home test, everything else. We're just taking it one step at a time right now with our testing and what we are requiring for students and staff to be able to come back after day five. So...
Just real quick, ask you that. So, do you think that of those 137 today, was that primarily what it is, is people trying to test at day five to come back to school or to work?
Don't know. A lot, I was aware of a lot of people today that left work to go get tested because they were symptomatic. So, you know, I think it's a mixture. Ms. Kelly, I think we have some people that either, you know, the children or the employee all of a sudden has symptoms, and so, they want to get tested. And then, I think we'll start seeing this coming back after five days. I think we'll start seeing that this week as well because anybody that was out last week, Wednesday, for example, would be able to come back with a negative test now if they were on quarantine from last Wednesday. So, we hope people will utilize that, we really do hope they will, especially with the lack of supplies that are out there for any other type testing right now. But I've said a lot, there was a lot to talk about as far as this, and we probably hadn't scratched the surface, but I'll be more than happy to take questions from the board or comments about how we're working through this.
Now, I just think, direct everyone to that, y'all got an excellent flow chart that is on the Darlington County Board site that gives you that if you are this, this is the route you need to go. And so, I mean, it's very thorough and very, I mean, any parent could access that resource and see where they fall and how long they need quarantine, et cetera, et cetera. Whoever would have to go with excellent.
And thank you for bringing that up. That chart has helped a lot.
That was actually one of our employees, and Kelly Parker, that were able to put that together right before we came back, and so, they did a great job. And it came from a parent's perspective, so I think that was very helpful.
Everyone, we're doing everything as quickly as possible to keep the school going. Our work, thank you.
That's certainly my priority. I mean, I think that the kids need to be in the school.
Kids murdered in school, that's what we need. Do thank everyone for doubling up, helping, whatever they have to do to get someone out, got an aide filling in, got a teacher filling in, whatever. Thank you, really, from the bottom of my heart for what y'all are doing. Appreciate it so much.
And it won't last forever. I know it seems so difficult right now. This is, this two shall pass, and it will pass quicker than the other two have, but I know how difficult it is right now.
Okay, no questions. Will we move on to superintendent's update? Anything else?
Speaking of employees, we are heading into our time for intent forms for our certified employees, which is the first process of working on contracts. So, that starts up this month, that we'll be sending out our intent forms to get a bead on how people are looking at next year and to also help our schools prepare for that as well. As we all know, contracts are due in May, but we'll actually send those out in April after the board has a chance to look at all those. It's the normal yearly process that we go through. And again, we're just looking forward to having as much information as we can to, as early as possible, be helping our schools for next year as well. So, we have that. And then, you know, again, the other parts that are going on with school, that, you know, there's still, there's still a lot of joy out there from kids. And I just want to remind everybody that most of our kids aren't really aware of what our adults are dealing with right now. And so, the smiles are still on their faces, and the willingness to be in school and learn and want to look up to the adults is still there, and so, I don't want to lose sight of that. I know these are difficult times for the adults, but the, most of our kids, especially our young ones, they don't know what's going on. And so, I would just encourage you to have that conversation with a child, to kind of center you back on what's going on. And, you know, again, when this passes, and it is going to pass, then we're going to be moving forward on everything else we've been talking about. And we have a lot of great things in store for the district as we move forward in the spring, but we got to get through this time right now. So, I think I've talked enough about the other stuff, so that's the superintendent's report for the night.
Okay. Any questions, superintendent? Anyone? We'll move on before we even hit foot. Mr. Morris?
Again, I always get confused, first of the year when they come out with all these gifts, we got some like in December, and they follow up again. But I appreciate all of the gifts. Like, we need to be appreciated right now, but thank you. No, I've got a list of things, but nothing big here. One question, are we still beating kids in classrooms?
Yes, I'm certain we are. Not every classroom, it depends on... On the building, and it depends on the amount of people that are involved, but absolutely, some of that's been going on, and it's, you know, it's because of putting large groups of kids together in cafeterias.
It's like, that's additional stress on your classroom teacher. I don't know if it's really had much of a positive impact on what you're trying to accomplish. I just say that and think about that. Anyway, I think the teachers are cutting an awful lot on right now with the restrictions that COVID presents itself in addition to the normal testing obstacles that they go through, and did put that on top of it. It really cuts down classroom time, additional things that they have to do. You know, my complaint last time was, you know, we continue to put things, we talk about money is put into the budget for school and what's in the classroom, what's not. Again, that's just one more thing that really has nothing to do with educating the kids, but yet, it's taking up time in the classroom. I just, whatever, I told your people, do they really feel good about this? Is there something that's helping, they think? If not, love to try to get that back to some normalcy there, but probably now, probably now, the opportunity, time is the way things are moving, but that's it. now the opportunity, time is the way things are moving, but that's it.
Sure. Mr. Morris?
First of all, I would like to thank everyone for their gifts, the schools for their thoughts as it relates to appreciation of board members. The only other thing I would like to say is I realized that, and I've had conversations with some employees, and I realized a lot of them are feeling stressed and burned out. And I would just ask that you hang in there with us. We understand your frustrations and concerns and that you will just hang in there and stay with us as we work through this. That's it.
Ms. House?
Yeah, I could, well, thank you everyone for all the gifts. I would like to do that. Thank you.
I too appreciate the, just the recognition, but I feel like, I feel like we are the least of the group that, I mean, we should be appreciating them and we do. And so, but it's a nice gesture and I'm very appreciative. And then also congratulations to you, Warren, on 30 years of services for it. I'm on year four and I'm thinking, how have you done it for 30 years? And also like just to mention that I was graduating from high school when you got on this board, which is crazy for me to think about. If you've been here now.
Leanne, throw out that shoulder, bro. You're digging him off.
My entire adult life, you've been on this board. That's pretty impressive. Because I, I know it's not a...
Likely wasn't 30 years of COVID.
Yeah, yeah. I know that's not point of reference there, but congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Happy to see everyone. Hope you're having a good rest of your holiday. And same as, you know, thanks for the gifts and we appreciate it and hope this thing will pass and we all know how soon, we hope it will pass.
Okay. I want to say thank you also, yes, we appreciate them. Like we had said, we need to be giving gifts to y'all, not you to us, but we do appreciate it so very much. Banking season, sir, how we doing?
We currently got 20 certified banking season. They're split pretty evenly between elementary, secondary and specialty. It was 24 last time we spoke and we're whittling away at it.
How aggressively are we recruiting? I'm sure we are. Really recruiting, right?
As much as we can during this environment. I mean, we're sharing the same struggles everyone else is, but this is the busiest recruiting season now as the winter graduates come out, as intent forms come out, as contracts come due, so we're heavily trying to sell ourselves to all those who are going to make themselves a budget. Business is upon us.
Good attention this year, have to fill as many spots as possible. Again, want to say thank you to all our teachers, all our employees, principals, bus drivers, custodians. We understand you're on a really, you know, this is stressful. It's stressful for everyone, but we do appreciate what you're doing. And like the superintendent said, this will pass at some point, but we just have to get through it and we will get through it. Thanks again for everything you do. We appreciate it. All right, moving on to personnel actions.
Will we accept personnel actions with the agenda?
Thank you. Any discussion? Here done. I would favor the motion to accept personnel with the agenda. I oppose. I have it. Executive session.
I will be going to executive session to discuss personnel matters, construction and property and contractual matters.
I have a second. Second, I have Leanne. I would favor the motion to go into executive session for personnel matters and construction and property contractual matter. I oppose. I have it. We're now going to executive session.
Okay, we're now back at open session. The House will make the motion to come out and second it by Mr. Kelly. We're now back in the regular session. Entertaining any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we uphold the administration's recommendation that the board make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education requesting that appropriate action be taken against the professional employee of the district who breached his/her employment contract with the district.
Seconded. Seconded, okay. Any discussion? I want to favor that motion. I oppose. It's havoc.
So I will adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn. I have a second. I will favor. We stand adjourned. Thank you. Hope watch tomorrow again, fellas.